All right, please silence your cell phones and devices, we're about to get started. So it is six o'clock, I call this meeting the Saginaw City Council Order, please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, please be seated. Item C is invocation, for that Pastor Ramon Smith, Methodist Church, welcome sir.
Glad to be here, Pastor Ramon Smith at Saginaw United Methodist Church within walking distance from here to 09 South Bluebonnet, we'd love to see you all in worship sometime. Would you please join me for a prayer? Holy God, God of Advent Hope and Dawn and Light, we pause tonight believing you still God communities, still lift leaders, still shine in the darkest places. Bless our mayor, our city manager, every city councilwoman and councilman, everyone who works for the city. Give them wisdom rooted in justice, courage shaped by compassion, and decisions that honor the people they serve. Cover our first responders, our police, firefighters, EMTs, with your protection and your peace. Bless every faith community in Saginaw, all who seek you and serve neighbor. Make us partners in healing this city. We lift the homeless up, the students who are struggling, the parents trying to make ends meet, surround them with strength, dignity, and hope. We lift up our school administrators, teachers of the Eagle Mountain Saginaw Independent School District, renew them with patience and passion for their calling. We pray for newcomers to Saginaw, those who left home for opportunity but now feel alone, give them community, belonging, and support. We lift our young people searching for identity, purpose, and place, guide them with your light. And now, oh God, bless this meeting, let it glorify you, let it move Saginaw toward hope, peace, and flourishing for all. Come, Lord Jesus, in this chamber, into this city, into our hearts. In the matchless name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, let all the people of God say amen.
Thank you Reverend, appreciate your wise words. All right, audience participation is one D, you may speak on any item that is on the agenda, fill out one of these forms over here by the Assistant Chief of Police, and we're happy to hear from you at the appropriate time. Moving on to the consent agenda. Two A, action regarding minutes from November 18th. Two B, action regarding reappointment of tactic increment reinvestment zone number one, Board of Directors. Two C, action regarding appointment of Sean Ferguson as a reserve police officer. Any questions, comments on the consent agenda? If not, entertain a motion.
Mayor, motion we approve, the consent agenda is read.
Thank you Paul, Valerie's second. Please cast your votes. Motion passes, let the record reflect, we have a quorum, a full house tonight, thanks for coming folks. All right, moving on to three, three A, recognitions presentations. Gabe, what do we have from the city folks tonight?
I don't think we have any, do you have any recognitions Randy? Yeah, I don't think we have any Mayor.
Okay, thank you sir. All right, moving on to three B, we have a special presentation tonight though, I have a proclamation that I will read in full, so please. Whereas Alma Loretta Mimi Garrett was born December 12th, 1925, in Monday, Texas. Loretta and her husband Alton moved to Saginaw, Texas in 2006 and served the community through her church. And whereas Loretta and Alton parented four daughters and one son in Abilene, Texas, and whereas Loretta has 12 grandchildren, 21 grandchildren, and six great-great-grandchildren. Loretta worked in a family business for 15 years, first grocery store for 12 years, and safely for 13 years before retiring. And whereas Loretta became involved and is a faithful member of the Saginaw Church of Christ since 2006. Whereas Loretta loves and supports Saginaw, her home, for the past 19 years. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that I, Todd Filippo, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, and the entire city council do hereby join in the celebration of Loretta Garrett's 100th birthday by declaring Friday, December 12th, 2025 to be Loretta Garrett Day in the City of Saginaw. Congratulations. Do y'all have a picture with the proclamation, I can bring it around? Well, it'll probably go downhill from there, that's the highlight of the evening folks, but that was neat, so. You guys in the back, Ronnie, y'all can sit down, we don't have to stand up, we got chairs, we got table, appreciate y'all kicking, not kicking out the 100-year-old lady and taking a seat from her, but. All right, let's move on, so, we're at three C, which is presentation update design options for the new animal shelter. So, I have to call an audible tonight, Kim Doughty Hickman from Quorum Architects had a medical emergency, she will not be able to attend. We're going to push this entire discussion to the next council meeting. I do know there are folks that are here that want to speak, and I've got forms for folks, you're allowed to speak tonight if you still want to, or we can push it to the next meeting, or you can speak both, it's either one what y'all want to do, because we will take no actions tonight, we'll discuss everything completely from zero next meeting, just when Kim can be here, she is needed to be here. So I have three, I believe, three cards, from Benjamin, from Stephanie, and Pam. If y'all want to speak, you can, right now, this is the only discussion we'll have on tonight, and we'll discuss it all again, so what would y'all like to do? Anybody want to speak tonight? Come on, yes ma'am.
I can speak next time.
If you want to, you certainly can, absolutely.
Wow, this is tall.
Can you get it down to you, so we can hear you?
I think you can hear me anyway. Well, hi, this is the first time I've ever come to a city council meeting to speak, does my three minutes start yet?
You go, go ahead, you're good, yes ma'am.
So, but I'm a resident here in Saginaw, retired teacher for our school, and I've also been to the pet shelter, and that's what I'm here for. I'd like to first thank the volunteers and those that work at the pet shelter, anybody here that works at the pet shelter? Well, you know, for what they have to work with, I think they've done an amazing job. But, one thing, I've lived here, oh, since my kids went to Elkins Elementary in the eighties, and been a teacher at Elkins and Chisholm, but our city's grown, our city has exploded over the last 10, 20, 30 years, and because of the new growth, we've added new schools, when I came in the eighties, there was five elementary schools, one junior high, and Boswell, that's it. And now we've got, what, 15, 16 elementary schools? That's a lot of growth, folks, and we're not stopping. We still have land for houses to be built on, and businesses, and when we needed more schools, we didn't crowd our schools, what we did, we built new schools, better schools, so our classrooms wouldn't be overcrowded. We just opened up our brand-new library and Senior Citizen Center, which I'm active in both, I'm on the library booster board, and have for many years, and so I got to watch from the ground up, watch that beautiful building be built. I knew how much we needed a new library, I knew how crowded we were getting over here at the Senior Citizen, just by, you had to be there early to play bingo, believe me, you had to get there early and have a spot saved for you, but, you know, we have a beautiful new facility, because we outgrew that. Well, folks, we've outgrown, and I looked it up, I think it was kind of funny, I looked up and saw what the first animal shelter looked like, here in Saginaw was a box, and then we got into 1980, and we had a little shed, and then, you know, we have what we have today, but guys, we've outgrown it, and it's way overdue. And I really think that our city needs to look, not to the present, but to the future. As our city grows, that animal shelter needs to grow, because there's more animals being let loose, let's face it, people can't afford to feed sometimes their animals, and will they get rid of first, their dogs or their cats, sad to say. But our facility over there, my dog has, is registered with the City of Saginaw, why? Because if she's found on the streets, I want to make sure she gets back, but you know, I don't really want her to be over there at that shelter. I know they have a great staff and volunteers, but let's face it, it's pretty rundown. You know, and then I'm going to close with this, you think of a quilt, and I thought of this because I have a quilt on my bed right now that belonged to my grandmother, and she made it, and I have some other quilts that were relatives, and, you know, that quilt's made with different pieces, you know, you sew them together, you hope they stay together, well, that's kind of like what we've done to the shelter over here, we've kind of put it to pieces, but you know, as you, as you use that quilt, it becomes worn, and you mend it where you can, well, we've done a lot of mending over there, and we, you mend it, but, you know, after a while, it's just not going to mend anymore, the threads are bare, the batting inside is really worn, and that's what that shelter is. So, I just ask you, right now, to look to the future of Saginaw, not the present, because the present needs to change, but we have a lot of new facilities, new income coming in, and I really think that we need a more inviting place for people to go to, where they want to find a pet for the future, a place where animals that are scared and lost, they can find comfort, they can find shelter, food, and anything physically they need to have done. And let's look not to the present, but let's get on the right track for the future, I liked how I said that, right track, get it, okay, the right track for the future for our animal shelter, it might just be across the way on Brenda Lane, people don't see it very much, but a lot of people go over there to visit, more than you would know. So I just come to you and just say, really consider it, consider it for those that can't speak for themselves, those animals, and let's hope they all get good homes, and let's hope people are aware this Christmas that you don't buy a puppy, and a couple of months later, when that puppy outgrows the yard, it goes to the shelter. So, that's what I came for, and I can speak in January too, I used to be a schoolteacher, so I know how to gab a little bit.
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, so, anyway, it was very nice, thank you for listening to me, thank you for being quiet, not booing me, but thank you very much.
Yes ma'am, thank you ma'am. All right, so as I mentioned, all this C and D will be bumped to the next meeting due to a medical emergency, anybody else want to speak on this topic that has a card? Benjamins, okay?
Howdy, so I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to make it in a couple of weeks, but I got on the Facebook thread, one of the Facebook threads about this meeting tonight, and I think there's just been a lot of misunderstandings out there, and I've been saying this to Gabe and other city staff for years, people don't know where Saginaw is. Saginaw has three elementary schools, we do not have 16 elementary schools, and as much as we are a region, and some people refer that they live in Saginaw area, y'all have 23,000 taxpayers that pay Saginaw $1,200 a year average to take care of them and their business, not Fort Worth residents, not Blue Mound residents, which, why are, why are they paying us $3,000 a year for animal services? Blue Mound is their own city, I guess that was a deal that was made a long time ago, maybe Blue Mound needed the help, I really don't know why, but in 2025, I think that agreement needs to be relooked at, because, I mean, talk to the average animal center employee here in Saginaw, what do they make, $3,000 a month, probably? I mean, that's a lot of money. So, I'm just going to run through my little list real, real quick, I haven't heard anyone say that Saginaw doesn't need a new animal control facility, or that anyone has said we don't need a bigger facility. Those questioning the cost and the needs of the proposed amenities or location are doing so to help save the proposed bond, because in our estimation, it will not pass in its current proposed format. I was told in a Facebook post that since I haven't volunteered at our facility, that I shouldn't come to this meeting tonight, and that made me livid. Actual residents, property owners, and voters matter, we have to pay the bill, we have to pay the upkeep, we have to take care of the staff and their entitlements, their healthcare, all the stuff that comes with being an employee of the City of Saginaw, and we get to pay the interest on that loan, because I don't know if people know what a bond is, it's basically applying for a credit card and getting a limit, and you're, and you're like, okay, well, the voter said we can have this, and we're going to have a set amount of interest for 20 years, 30 years, and guess what, investors don't have to buy those bonds, the bond market is really interesting place. City council and residents' concerns have been blown off and met with moral superiority, name-calling, accusations, and emotional blackmail. The last meeting where this animal control center was brought up, one of the volunteers came up here and said, a quote from Gandhi, okay, how dare you, we are humans too, I have a rescue animal, because I don't want to waste money, doesn't mean you get to be better than me. The assessment from the beginning was based off of inflated numbers, including numbers from Fort Worth and Blue Mound, does our animal control ever pick up animals from outside city limits, or accept animals from non-residents? Quorum, which is the architecture company that couldn't come tonight, used an existing plan done for another city, still charged us a new plan fee. They said that they had to move some things around, well, I work in jewelry and CAD CAM, we already have the ring made, somebody switches a round for a square, click, click, plan done. Why is this parcel of land being looked at? It is a piece of heavy industrial land that is currently tax-producing. Quorum talked about building future bridge, trails, a dog park, for the other side of town, and a future budget that is not included in this proposed $16 million bond. She literally said they are softening the area, why are we doing this to our local businesses? There are tax-paying businesses over there, right across the street, from where y'all are going to put a city facility that is supposed to bring all these people that want to like, I don't know, it's like a PetSmart or something that they're talking about building. It's a heavy industrial area, will the, will the promised efficiencies in this building, because we were told in the last meeting in September, oh, they need a prep kitchen, they need, you know, this and this and this, there was all these efficiencies promised, Kim from Quorum said that Carrollton saved 50% in all this time with, with their employees. Will that end up in reduced labor costs, maintenance costs, supplies cost? I would expect that the animal control's budget would be cut if we're going to build this current proposal, because we're paying upfront for all these efficiencies. It feels like this is a retail building, natural light, play areas, yoga rooms, free roaming cat rooms, I mean, I encourage everybody to watch the meeting from September 16th, unlike our neighboring cities, Saginaw participates in the TNVR program, aren't we investing in that to reduce the amount of stray animals? So why are we increasing the kennels by 400%? I mean, isn't TNVR supposed to lower that? Other cities around us don't do that. If you build it, they will come, if we build 150 kennels, we're going to get a bunch of drop-offs. Why do we need new meeting rooms and training rooms? The animal control staff actually said, oh, I won't have to have staff travel to Rock, Blue Rock, and all these different places and have hotels, yet they said that the meetings aren't held locally because the person isn't certified. Also, all the cities that we were compared to, which the council was told when they asked about city population, that you can't base the needs of this animal shelter based solely off of city population, well, Baytown, 87,000 people, Mansfield, 89,000 people, Garland, 252,000 people. This year, Saginaw to date, and this is according to the Tarrant County website, has brought in about $7 million in sales tax, Garland's brought in 49 million. I mean, these cities that they compared us to are orders of magnitude larger in taxable property value, in average home cost, in sales tax value, in everything. I really don't understand why we were compared, even Carrollton, 136,000 people. Saginaw is a city, not a region, Kroger and Chick-fil-A are not in Saginaw. Saginaw is a city of 23,000 people that are parents, that are brothers, sisters, that are pet owners, we want to take care of pets, we want to take care of our city employees, we want to do it the right way. Thank y'all for listening.
Thank you Benjamin. All right, I have other cards for folks that want to speak, let's see, we've, have we heard from Deborah Bremet, you want to speak, please, yes, come on.
Well, I would piggyback on one thing that Ben said, which was, you know, definitely Saginaw is very small. I've been in Saginaw for 21 years, and yes, when I first moved here, Boswell was the only high school, and so, yes, we have exploded, but as Ben brought up, the, the figures and the amounts of just how big is Saginaw compared to Fort Worth, Fort Worth, Fort Worth, Fort Worth? My, our son is a teacher at Wayside Elementary School, and, I mean, excuse me, Wayside Middle School, and they'll be getting into their new building in January. That took a lot of effort of bond, but then we had COVID, and we ended up having to go out for another bond, because it increased the expense of the building and the, and all the supplies, so everything was halted, and then the people were given, you know, let's vote on this, but it wasn't a clear cut of, some people didn't understand, so they were vote, you know, wanting to vote it down, like, well, we've already voted for that bond, we've already voted for that bond, and I've tried to become more active, which is something that all of us as citizens need to do, is become more active in our community and know exactly what is going on, because I didn't realize until I was actually talking with my son about that particular bond issue of the fact that that's true, you set it up for the future, as he said, like the credit card to pay for it, well, then catastrophicness happened, well, suddenly it's going to cost a huge amount more, well, that's not what the original bond was, but we can't get this school built, what are we going to do? And by educating ourselves and knowing what is going on, for me, that really helped me in my voting and everything. Well, now that this has come up with the animal shelter, and it is very near and dear to my heart as well, because I love animals, I couldn't volunteer down there, I would stay there 23 hours a day, and I'd want to take every one of them home, and that, of course, is just not feasible, even though the ACO officers might not mind that, but, but, and so we, you know, donations, we send in donations, I was so proud to hear of Saginaw, the animal shelter becoming a 501(c)(3), being able to have some rescues come in to help to accommodate, because, yes, 20 years ago, it was like, if I saw a loose stray dog, as Mayor, you said in that meeting in September, I can agree with you, sometimes it's just the dog owners, they're just irresponsible, and how can we, you know, how can we curb that? Here's a dog, out, no collar, no tag, no chip, no nothing, but I didn't want to take him to the animal shelter, because it was three days, they kill him, that's it, you know, boom. But once I started researching and checking and looking and seeing what all they've been doing, and it's phenomenal, and I was actually down there again last week, I take the donations, I'd go to Goodwill, whatever, Senior Day, Half Price Day, to find blankets, to get cat litter, whatever they can use, and when standing in there, you know, it's, it is, it is horrible, we all know that, the building was supposedly temporary, falling around, apart all around them, 87, what, one of the workers said, yeah, that when, that gets pretty hot in the summertime, and burns their hands, so there's so much need, and there is that need for an upgraded and a better capable animal shelter to facilitate Saginaw. But when standing in there, it was, I saw the whiteboard, and that was for the workers, but unfortunately, it's such a small area in the entranceway, and it's like, you know, cage, door broken, dog door on cage, such and such, broken, you know, when, when they're utilizing every stretch that they can stretch, what can we do? 18, I thought it was 18 million was what they're looking at the bond, yes, that sounds atrocious, and how in the world? But this has been something we've been needing for years, I've been here, like I said, 21 years, and here we are in 2025, ending into 2026, that even if we could get a bond issue for three-quarters of that amount, we're still not even looking for anything to be built for another, what, two years or more? So, we've got so much going on, but then, as he's, as we know, it's exploded with our population, just exactly when those AC officers are coming, if I find a dog, I'm in Saginaw proper, but that dog may have come from, you know, we know, across the street can be Fort Worth, one side of the road is, is Saginaw, one side is Fort Worth, if, if Saginaw PD can't go down the road over there to give a ticket, because it's Fort Worth, so how, how many of these animals are, you know, really are Fort Worth? So, I, I know that that's way beyond my research and everything of knowing, but considering how many people we have of 23,000 in, in our population, yeah, then it's like, whoa, wait a minute, we've got it, how, how can we do it? And I know you as our elected officials are the ones that are here to somehow figure it out, with trying to make this one happy without making this one upset, to not get this. with trying to make this one happy without making this one upset, to not get this, to not get that. But in the meantime, we're still, we're still sitting here. And, and for me, it seems as though it's been very long, decades overdue of just sitting on it. And yes, we've got the wonderful library and senior center. And I've, have volunteered and am a library booster now, to be involved and to see, and it's like, we, what can we do now for this next step? Because sometimes it just seems like, well, what, you know, people just open their door and let out their animals, just go, they'll get killed on Saginaw Main, you know, they don't want them anymore. Our, our future daughter-in-law is a veterinarian in Fort Worth. And at their vet clinic, they just get a box left on their front doorstep. And it's three-day-old, brand-new kittens. I mean, like you said, Mayor, we can't change what people are, but how can we get it out to people? That's, that's something that I would like to know a little more about and hopefully research a little bit more and find out of how can people like me who had no idea, but once you start to know, it's like, you can't unsee. So how do we get more people involved to know? Because we do need it. Eighteen million, well, Sag, uh, Fort Worth, they said, well, it costs less, but then they're budgeting and yada, yada, yada. Well, considering we're talking two years down the line before it's even built, that's why they're looking at the, the millions of dollars. Can it be done cheaper? I'm sure it can. Can we do without some of the luxury things that they're talking about? It all, i- at this point, seems so necessary. But I know we're also working on a time clock, because we've gotta get it out there. So I just wanted to voice my frustration over it and appreciate you all for what you do and for listening to all of us and, um, and making a difference, hopefully.
Can I put an ending on there?
Yes, absolutely, yes, sir. Please, yes, sir.
I'm her husband, and we've been married seventeen years. And I was, I retired from Lockheed Martin and I was a software budget manager for a large corporation. All I did for the last ten years was work budget, talk to Gage about this, talk to Lee about it. I understand budget, man, I understand budget after working there. You know what you did, they're doing over there, I did spreadsheets, that's all I ran, but I wanna skip that part. I grew up just across the street from Gainesville, across the Red River, on the Red River was my grandpa's land. I grew up on that land, we had cows, we had horses, but we also had cats and dogs. The dogs were working dogs, they were out there and they worked their cattle for us. The cats, they did their thing to take care of the mice, keep the barns clean, kill the snakes, kill those grasshoppers. So what I'm switching gears to is, I learned from a young child growing up on that farm, how important our animals are to us. And then after I married this beautiful young lady, who happens to love animals even deeper than I do, I learned the importance of how to get attached to these animals. We've been through a lot of animals, my wife was a hospice nurse. I can't tell you how many animals that she has done hospice on besides humans to let that animal have a nice life as it passes away. So I would like to see us do the right thing. I'm skipping the budget, skipping the fin- the financing, the spreadsheets, but the right things, to take care of these animals that can't take care of themselves. Anyway, the end.
Right, thank you, thank y'all, folks, appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, I still got a couple, one, um, I think you just came, Kim Tate, would you like to come on up? Welcome.
Hello. The young lady back here had me in tears, so bear with me about the animals. Um, well, good evening, everyone. I won't be before you long, my name is Kim Tate, I've lived in Saginaw for fourteen years. Um, we see, we send many donations to help from food, blankets, um, toys. Uh, we send in a lot of donations to help these animals. Um, but I just wanna say, please consider a new shelter for these animals. I'm crying 'cause I recently put my, my dog down, so.
It's okay, take your time, you're all right, you're good.
So animals, animals rely on us. Thank you. Animals rely on us, animals deserve the same level of care and respect as humans. And dogs spill backwards, it's God, so let's treat them with compassion and have a heart. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, did I miss, is anybody else in the audience wish to speak on this? Come on up, yes, ma'am.
Hi, I did turn in my card, but my name wasn't said, but my name's Siobhan. Um, I've lived in Saginaw for about twenty years now, um, which isn't super long compared to some people, but it's half my life, so it feels like a long time. Um, so, um, I have participated, I was on, um, Project Dream Play and helped get the playground, um, built at Willow Creek Park, and I was also on one of the bond committees. So I am, um, pretty active within Saginaw and I am a strong advocate for change. Um, I do want to start by saying that I fully support a new, um, animal shelter in our city. I think that it would greatly benefit our, our facility, or our city, and, um, we need one that provides humane care for animals, um, supports adoptions and reflects the values of our community. Um, but I do really want to urge the council to pursue this project in a fiscally responsible manner. Um, currently, the presentations that are under review show plans that are between fifteen to eighteen million dollars, because I know there were a couple of, um, presentations. Um, and those figures rival, um, cities that are much larger than ours with significantly higher populations and higher tax bases. Um, the plans appear to represent an ideal facility, um, and they were drafted by developers who, of course, want to build a more expensive facility because they seek profit. Um, instead of coming up with a practical and affordable design that was, um, for Saginaw specifically. Um, during the last presentation by Quorum, they mentioned Carrollton's facility. Um, it said that our facility would need to be much larger. Um, Carrollton has a population of about a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand people, which is four times the amount of Saginaw, um, at buildout, so thinking, um, along the future lines still. Um, in most real-world situations, when we're talking about a household or a business, um, budget is really kind of the driving factor in making a decision. Um, it seems that cost wasn't really prioritized in this process. Um, from the start, the city should have directed the planners to design a facility within a set budget, um, rather than allowing them to propose a state-of-the-art facility that is beyond what we really need. Um, and now that the employees of the animal shelter have seen this design, of course, there's no wiggle room, we need everything that was proposed, right? It's like showing, showing somebody a Mercedes Benz and saying, would you like this? Or would you like this Ford Focus instead, right? Of course, we want the Mercedes, once we've seen what's possible. Um, it was also previously mentioned that the new facility would mean the animals would be happier, um, and we'd have better adoption rates than we even currently have. So I just wondered why, if that was the case, why we are trying to triple the capacity that we currently have as well? It doesn't really add up to me. Um, it's also important to recognize the likelihood of voter response for this. Um, a bond at twenty million dollars will almost certainly be voted down by the citizens. Um, and if it's voted down, then there's not gonna be a shelter at all, even the Ford Focus one. So I think that's something that we really need to think about, nobody would win in that situation. Um, but I feel like if the council works with Quorum or whatever company to present a more affordable, reasonable plan, um, I think that the committee would be far more willing to support it. Um, we did, we also saw this with the last school bond, um, there was a, an auditorium that was proposed, um, and Saginaw High School gym had, um, items that were proposed and those were voted down. Um, but there were bonds for safety improvements and building improvements and technology improvements, and those all passed. So I think that the citizens vote based on needs and numbers. So that's something that we need to think about when we bring this bond to proposal. The reality is that many families in Saginaw are struggling with rising cost of living. While incomes have not kept pace with inflation, Medicare prices have increased, healthcare costs are going up, residents are already feeling the pressure of increased taxes, and the concern of being taxed out of our homes is very real. Um, and I think that you guys need to weigh this reality when considering a bond proposal. Um, I also want you to, um, consider, you know, the design that balances compassion for animals, financial responsibility to taxpayers. I think that a modest plan, well-planned shelter can meet the needs of our city without placing an undue burden on residents. Um, and then my last request to the council, um, I know that there's a lot of conversation, you know, we talked about things that are going on online. Um, a lot of information and a lot of opinions are Fort Worth residents. So I really just think, when you're talking to people, make sure we're talking to Saginaw residents because we do wanna hear the voices of the community, but I do feel like Saginaw should have a higher, a heavier weight when we're, we're having those conversations, so. Um, those are my thoughts, happy to talk further, um, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. All right, the link I got, everybody, all in, all done on this subject? We, we, we back again, next meeting, same thing we will discuss and, uh, take some action then, so. Thank you, folks, moving on. We're at three E, discussion regarding design of East McElroy Boulevard. Trenton Tidwell, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Okay, tonight we're gonna talk about some street updates, we're gonna focus on, uh, McElroy Boulevard. We're actually gonna start, though, with Old Decatur and Knolls, and then we'll work through all the phases for McElroy. Oh, come on. So, Old Decatur North, we opened bids, um, last week, later in the agenda today. Um, we're recommending that we award that contract to DDM Construction. The bids came in, um, really solid for that, we're really excited about those, um, bids. So the total's about four and a half million. And compared to the budget that we had set aside, there's a surplus of about eight-hundred thousand dollars from that, which is really exciting to hear. So that gives us some cushion and some flexibility to perhaps, um, look at other, um, roadways in the city that need, um, addressing. The schedule for that project, um, it'll start, if, if awarded to DDM today, it'll start in late January or early February and will last about a year. Um, we're having to split up that into several phases just to keep traffic, um, one-way traffic on it, 'cause it's pretty narrow. Knolls Phase Two and Three moving on to it, um, Roundabout is open, um, now, so that's really exciting. Uh, we do have striping, signage and some sod to finish up there. Bill has already started his punch list and, um, they're starting to work on those items. He's expecting them to finish that in about January, um, mid-January to late January. But Bill's really good at his punch list, so sometimes I build in some fluff into that timeline.
Is everybody driven down Knolls? I went and drove around the roundabout four or five times and honked my horn, so just, I hope y'all have as well, 'cause it's a long time coming, but we're glad it's finally open.
I hope you didn't drive too fast.
In all honesty, you can't drive that fast in that one, so that's a good thing, it's really nice.
What part of it's nice?
The whole thing.
The whole thing?
The whole thing is nice, yeah. Well, I think it's, I probably think it's one of the, I think it's one of the safer roundabouts that I've been on, because of the way y'all got the entrances and everything, I think it's really nice. And I wasn't forward at the beginning, but it is nice, thank you.
Well, thank y'all, yeah. Um, I think we collaborated a lot on that, so credit to y'all too, so. I think the outcome, everyone's really happy with it so far. Um, okay, we're gonna jump to McElroy. Once again, I'll have some of these phasings up there to help us keep track of which phase we're talking about, but we're gonna start with the yellow, that's the phase that's right outside our door here, Phase Three, and then we're gonna work our way to the right or east on the, um, map. So Phase Three, we had that public meeting, um, man, a little over a month ago at this point. And thank you all for coming, I thought that was really successful, got a lot of good input from the citizens. So we are wrapping up our final design for that right now. Um, we had a few changes from the meeting, and one of the final things we're actually looking to wrap up is the median design. So I'm honestly hoping to get some, um, feedback from y'all tonight, I'll show y'all kind of what the top two options were, and then I'm hoping to get a final decision that we can move forward with and finalize the plans. Um, just a reminder on the schedule before I jump to those options, uh, we are still working with franchise to get clear, the main ones are Encore and Atmos, they have some major relocations. They are still telling us that, um, they should be cleared by May of twenty-twenty-six. And based on their progress, we do believe that that's true. So that sets us up well to advertise the project and award it in the spring of next year, and then we can roll right into starting in the summer of twenty-twenty-six. So the two top options that came from the public meeting were, um, xeric or xeriscaping, which you see on the left, and then the color and stamped concrete, which you see on the right. Um, I will mention that artificial grass also had a lot of green votes, but it also had just as many red votes. So we kinda had that as a net neutral. So these were our two, um, top options based off the meeting. I will mention the xeriscaping, from this image, it does show some decomposed granite, and I'll just mention that Randy has told me, and I agree, that that would be a maintenance concern. And so what, what we'd be proposing with that option would be more river rock and then the native, um, drought-resistant plants that don't require as much maintenance.
So Randy, I'm assuming the stamped concrete would be absolutely the lowest maintenance?
Absolutely.
I, I got concerned with that river rock, 'cause I've seen other places put it in and in a couple of years, you get a lot of weeds in it.
It is a problem, yeah.
I absolutely am glad to hear the, the crushed granite, 'cause in order to see, all you gotta do is go over to the library, there's already gr- gr- weeds everywhere.
And you can put a stick of a weed barrier as you want, but it doesn't work.
It's looking bad already.
So when you look at the initial costs, they're comparable, um, around two-hundred thousand, but the annual maintenance is what, over the twenty-year lifespan, is really gonna drive the cost up of the xeriscaping, so. Um, I think it's a matter of opinion.
How many feet of, like, linear feet were we talking about? The square feet is seventy-eight, a hundred square feet?
Yeah, there's two main, two or three main medians. If I had to estimate it, I'd say it's between like six-hundred and eight-hundred linear feet of medians.
Okay.
Is it possible that we mix it up and do a little of each? I mean, just do concrete, it's just that it wouldn't.
Yeah, I think that would be an option. Another option, someone asked would, could we mix up the types of concrete? Um, so perhaps putting, so on the roundabout, you may have noticed, in the Central Island, we have the more rock pattern, that's a dark tan color. And in some of the median areas, we'll have this brick stamped concrete. So could we do a combination of the two, someone asked? And so certainly we could look into a more decorative stamped colored concrete.
The whole idea of this is to make this kind of the main street and lift the place and just put the stamped concrete down, if we're gonna do it.
Yeah, and that's a great point, that this photo perhaps doesn't do justice to the real potential of stamped concrete, 'cause we, you could, you know, put in patterns, different colors, different textures.
Yeah, I mean, you can do stamped like this, but I've seen a lot of patterns, I've seen some, some pretty sweet stamped concrete.
We could put sag and all, all kinds of stuff, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
In Phoenix, they do like, I see lizards everywhere. Um, so yeah, we could do a train or something. Um, I know this is kind of throwing it on y'all, but yeah, any more questions and then if we're able to move towards a decision?
Um, I just wanna put my vote in for the xeric, because, you know, this is the area of the city where we have our municipal buildings. This is the most important area of the city to look beautiful and to take advantage of that to, uh, help the beautification of the city. And also, you know, we have the new fire station, we have the new library and senior center, and we're going to be remodeling this building. And so everybody will be coming here to conduct their business. And I think it's very important that we make this as beautiful as possible. So, you know, like you said, we can get rid of these little gravel places and we can put more native plants in there. It can be done in a very low-maintenance manner and beautiful. And you know, this boring stamped concrete is just, I hate to say, it's, it's not attractive. So I feel very strongly that we need to, uh, really make this area beautiful.
Sean, did you have, uh, LeSean?
Yeah, so I have two questions. Um, one was in the regard, back, the slide that you had that had the cost on it. Um, why was that not on the options at that meeting for each of the items?
I believe we did talk about the cost. I may not have had a table for all eight of the options, uh, but we, we spoke it in terms of magnitude.
When people went over and placed their sticker, it did not say anything about the cost?
Correct, yeah, it didn't say it right there, yeah.
Is there a reason why?
No, I mean, we spoke about it at the meeting and we had people there to ans- help answer questions and stuff, but no, we didn't. I think with eight options, it was a little overwhelming, I thought, to have all the numbers for people, but. I think with eight options, it was a little overwhelming, I thought, to have all these numbers for people, but it's a fair point. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, because I mean, to just look at how things look, I mean, we have to look at cost too.
Yeah.
And not, not the cost to install necessarily as much as the cost to retain. The other question that I had was, what if we just didn't have median's at all and kept those thirty-five mature trees that are there along by Roberts?
Yeah. So, it was several years back, we were asked to look at changing the master thoroughfare plan from like a three-lane collector to the two-lane divided. So the benefits that were really honed in on for changing it to the two-lane divided with the raised median was the landscaping, the aesthetics of the corridor with what Mary was saying, kind of the downtown boulevard, boulevard effect. This question was asked before the public meeting, so we did look into it, and I have some notes written down. So I think those benefits, I guess, set us aside. There's additional safety benefits that we talked about. You know, having the controlled access even more so is a benefit. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, it's a good question. It came up at the meeting. The idea, as y'all are all aware, is to have a main street-type feel. And if you have a main street feel, you have pedestrian traffic, and with a median and divided roadway, it's clearly safer, so.
I would worry about, wouldn't those trees tear up the roadway and the median after a while, after years and years when they start, yeah?
So I think the point Sean is saying that if, if we were to not have a raised median, the curbs of the roadway would be approximately where they are today. Because there's three lanes of pavement out there right now. So we would be far enough from the trees, I wouldn't be concerned about that. The long-term concern with the trees is the water, the twelve-inch water line that's directly below it. And I confirmed with Randy that there is concern about the longevity of that line with the trees being right on top of it. And so when we looked at the cost comparison of like, are we saving money if we go back to a three-lane section? Which I don't think that should be the main decision, because like Gabe said, I think there's a lot of benefits from aesthetics and safety. But when you do look at that factor, the savings were about four hundred thousand net. You would save four hundred thousand dollars, which for a ten-million-dollar project is
Yeah, it's marginal. So how far down does the wide part of the median go and where does it get real narrow? Because I noticed on the design that it got real narrow further down, so about where is that?
It's approximately at Amber, so right here.
So just by the fire station. So the narrowest part of the median would be here, so we wouldn't get much aesthetic of doing xeriscaping.
Correct, it'd be mainly the east side or the west side.
Yeah, so there's not much down there except for the fire station, so
Yeah, it's more of the gateway kind of entrance into the corridor.
And as far as aesthetic, I mean, the stamped concrete would look nice, right, because that's what we got at the roundabout is the stamped concrete. So it's already kind of designed to match with that in that area anyway. I just, I'm concerned about doing the xeriscap, the maintenance. We have, already have issues with maintenance on, on xeriscap and, and like you said, in front of the library, so, I mean, for me, I think stamped concrete, we can adjust the, how it looks, but it's down there anyway. So we're not going to see it out here except for maybe a one or two-foot strip.
Go ahead, Brett.
Do you have a good top-down view of where the median is going to go? And, because I think a lot of us may be misunderstanding exactly where that's going to look and how it's going It would be helpful to me to be able to see, all right, this is going in Phase three, but Phase three includes a cemetery and, you know, everything down the, on the east side to a completely changing scape by the time you get to the roundabout. So there's a lot of variables.
I don't have a graphic of it, but I mean, if from, on this map, it's from the roundabout to Amber is the only, only portion where we're able to have that. I believe it's fourteen or sixteen-foot wide median.
Pedro, do you have the slides from the construction meeting that we had over at the library? Okay, because I know there was a good one in there that kind of showed a closer zoomed-in part of it.
There's, there's really three different areas. So from Amber to the west to the roundabout, that's where we're really talking about the full median, the full two-lane divided. From Amber to about Opal, it's, that's the transition period where you do have some raised median's, but the, the access is a little more demanding there with the city facilities. So there's some raised median's, but then it transitions to the three-lane section. And then from definitely Opal to the east, it's all three-lane. There's no median's, no raised median's at all.
And as far as pedestrian traffic, I was looking at the, at that construction meeting, there's three raised crosswalks with flashing lights and then sidewalks all the way down the side. So I would hope there would not be any pedestrian traffic in the middle of the median in those areas anyway.
They're not raised, though, just to clarify. Yeah, they're not proposed to be raised.
Thanks for that clarification.
Other questions for Trent?
Yeah, well, I was doing some numbers here, and so you think you can, for the zero landscaping one, you've got some dollar amount there, and you got the cost over twenty years, and I did the math, and if my math is right, I ain't saying it is. It seems like you're saying that we can maintain those, do all the landscaping, replace any dead plants, things like that, for about ninety-three thousand, six hundred dollars. That seems awful optimistic to me. Twenty years to maintain that all the way down through there, you know?
Isn't it thirty thousand a year?
Thirty thousand a year. Thirty, thirty thousand a year.
Thirty thousand annual maintenance.
Oh, okay. I was just looking at the dollar amounts at the bottom. They said the cost over twenty years, they said.
It may be the, that's per square foot, so we made
You're looking at six hundred thousand, yeah, for twenty years.
That makes sense. Okay, see, that's my math. No problem. I need to get these people to mow my yard. Another thing, and I want to bounce off of what Sean said, it's not just Saginaw. I, I mean, if I, if I went around and graded our landscaping right now, nothing against Saginaw, I'd give us a C minus, okay? Nothing against Saginaw, nothing against our people who does it. It's just a booger to find companies to come in and do that. And it's not just Saginaw. I can tell you that Arlington's having the same from all these cities around here is having, and they're doing the same thing we're doing, trying to find a company that will come in. It's easy to find people to mow your grass, okay, and do a real good job. It's almost impossible to find somebody to do good landscaping and keep it up to date and things like that. And so that's why you see me leaning more to, we need to, you know, don't just do the standard stamped concrete, but add I'm not artistic, so don't ask me to, you know, get, add, find somebody who's artistic, add some design to that stamped concrete, like somebody said, put some lizards in it. I'm fine with that. And go that, to me, that's, that's what I think needs to be done. It's just, yeah, yeah, stamped training.
Paul had a good idea earlier about just doing mixing it up. I think that makes a lot of sense. We get a little of both. I mean, maybe we do it sixty, forty, or I don't know, whatever.
We did have a combo option that didn't get a lot of votes, but I think people were more focused on one or the other, where it did have a border of different shades of colored concrete mixed with like a more narrow strip of plant.
I mean, I'd, I'd be happy with doing, you know, a strip of stained concrete and a strip of xeriscap, a strip, something like that, you know?
Here's this, like this year, you got the xeriscap. Instead of all of these pebbles, which roach it, do the stamped concrete down through. They'll do a beautiful design, again, make some lizards in there, and then put the plants in between them. And so, so now all you got to do is deal with where those plants are. To me, that would be a good compromise.
You wouldn't have rocks getting dislodged and things, yeah?
So a combination?
It makes a lot of sense.
I'd make it colored.
Right, you can do, you can have concrete any color you want.
I mean, I'd make it colored and make it
And maybe, I mean, I know, I've seen, I've mentioned it before in a meeting, that like over in Dallas, they've got some the big concrete median's, they put red yuccas all the way through the middle. And so maybe just having an area in the middle where there's some drought-tolerant plants, but then have the surrounding border kind of like an oval, be the stamped concrete with some variations here and there, I mean
Sean, what's the maintenance for a red yucca? You'd know better than I would. What is that, nothing?
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, the, they do get big and the blooms get tall and then the stalks get, they bend over and break off, but I mean, that's, you're sweeping and picking them up. There's, so there's not much.
Not much, yeah.
Yeah, and the watering's really low. I mean, the ones in Dallas, I don't even know if they're irrigated. I
I see a lot of them not even irrigated, you're right.
They just grow crazy.
Yes, ma'am.
If we do the combination, which would be a good compromise, I think it would be really pretty where we have this gravel, have that be the stamped concrete and have it be curving. It would, it would be more interesting than just straight lines of the stamped concrete. So I can see how it could be still beautiful.
Luckily, it won't be me drawing it, because it wouldn't be straight lines, yeah. Okay, I think that's a great compromise, like you said.
You got the feedback you need?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you have any more questions, let us know, but yeah, I think you've got good feedback.
I got the thumbs up from Randy, so means we're approved stamped. Okay, the, we have four more slides, so the next four slides are all going to talk about East McElroy. Just to state it clearly, the goal of today is just to remind everyone of what's the status for funding for each phase, what's the condition of each phase, and then look to y'all for some input on next steps. After I get done talking about these four slides, I believe Gabe and/or Randy is going to talk about some options we may have with some funding. So we're going to start with the green segment, which is Phase two A. So this includes the signal at Saginaw Boulevard, the approach on the west side as well, and then it goes to Spring Hollow. We are under design for this phase currently. We are finishing up our internal QA QC process for sixty percent. So it'll be submitted this month. So full design is funded for this phase. We started that early because of the challenges that we anticipated with railroad, tech dot, and property acquisition. So railroad, we're starting to figure out the PE agreements, coordinate that with the railroad. We're going to plan a diagnostic meeting to make sure that we can design this to meet their standards and their quiet zone standards in case we decide to move forward with the quiet zone. After we submit tech dot, after we submit sixty percent, we'll reach out to tech dot and start coordinating what type of permit they're going to require. We're optimistic that we can minimize the type of permit they require, but it is up to them ultimately, so it may be a lengthy process. And then lastly, there, there's multiple property acquisitions, but one main one, and I believe y'all are discussing it in executive session today. So this cost estimate, whenever we are finishing this sixty percent, did remain right at where we estimated it with the CIP update, which is nine and a half million, which we do not have planned. So that would, in my mind, I have heard that it would be a priority project for a potential bond program. Yes?
On the quiet zone, what's the approximate difference in cost if you plan for a quiet zone versus not planning for it? And then one more caveat. What is the difference in the available grant money that you can get if you plan for a quiet zone versus not?
Okay, the, the amount of cost associated with the railroad itself is significant, and you'll notice the cost of this segment is almost double the cost of Segment one, which are comparable lengths. But those are not quiet zone features. They are things you have to do regardless of quiet zone or not. So if you think about the Bailey-Boswell corridor or Bailey-Boswell crossings, they all have double gates, they have a preemptive signal, and they have all the new railroad panels. All of that is at the expense of the city. So the actual cost of making it quiet zone, meet quiet zone standards is negligible. We did look at not putting the quiet zone here, and all that meant was removing the raised median. The raised median is just an extra hundred foot of linear curb, of curb. So it's, it's honestly, could go either way. We've moved towards making it quiet zone eligible, and that was similar, or that was tied to the discussion of do we want to make Bailey-Boswell a quiet zone, which is on the agenda later today as well? Did I, what was your second question? Oh, the grants.
The grants.
I can look into that more. I honestly haven't heard of a lot of grants towards cities doing quiet zones, because it's typically the cities that are prompting it, and so I haven't seen that. I've seen a lot of grants moving towards removing crossings and elev, and making elevated crossings, removing at-grade crossings.
Okay, when we looked in the past about this, there were absolutely no, of course, the railroad would not help you with a quiet zone at all. It's the opposite. They charge you a lot more and make you jump through a lot of hoops, so we looked before. We, and, and this has part of been my initiative to ask us to look at every crossing possible for a quiet zone, because I know trains are here and they're here before us, but anything we can do to alleviate a little bit of that noise is, is a positive for us, for businesses, for schools, for everything. So that's why we're looking at it, every crossing. It may not be possible at every crossing, and that's okay, but we can at least evaluate. And the one thing you mentioned about the raised median and stuff, even if you don't do a, a crossing, that makes it safer. That makes it harder for people to cross around, like that guy who just got, you know, killed by crossing, jumping across the median thing. So that, anything you can do to help make it a little bit safer.
Well, the point in asking that question was not, even if we put in the quiet zone features, that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to designate it as a quiet zone.
Correct.
We can just leave it alone and no harm, no foul. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't spending, you know, that there's three million additional to the cost of this section of road just because we want to plan for features of a quiet zone. So that, that was my only intent there.
And the Bailey-Boswell one is a good example of that. We designed all of that with the intent of it being quiet zone eligible. The IPO we're bringing to you, I can give more detail about it, but there has been a request to make it a quiet zone. The only cost we're anticipating is thirty thousand dollars of striping and signage, to just refresh everything to make it valid. The only other cost is, the railroad requires that you give each of them fifty thousand dollars in case they spend that much reviewing your plans. And if they don't spend it, they'll give it back to you. So the estimated cost is a hundred and thirty thousand, but only thirty of it is actual.
Well, I sure wish somebody'd give me fifteen thousand dollars, kind of give it back.
Just to look at something?
Fifty, five-zero, yeah, it's, yeah, it's a hoot. Okay, this next slide is still about two A, so this is still about the green. We started design on this last year or this year. We are planning to finish design and all the permitting that's required about summer of twenty-seven. We could honestly fast-track that if we needed to, but I think that tie, that plays in really well into us finishing Phase three, which is right out here. And then the idea would be that we can roll into East McElroy, whether it's one of the phases on East McElroy or potentially all of the phases of East McElroy, whatever y'all and the citizens decide. Okay, moving to the blue section, which is two B. Let me flip my slide. So the status of this is we have not started design, nor do we have funding for construction. The PCI last time we collected was a score of sixty-four out of one hundred.
How long ago was that?
That was three years ago. We, we just got the contract last council meeting to redo that, so we're getting on the schedule for, I believe it's December or maybe early January.
We know that hadn't gone up.
No. Well, the roads we've touched, the roads we've improved have gone up. The cost of this roughly, these are just orders of magnitude, or the ten million I do feel confident in, I haven't, the one million is just an estimate, is for design and construction about one million and ten million. The challenges on this one are somewhat minimal, I'll say, knock on wood. There is right-of-way acquisition that we would anticipate, but a lot of those parcels are already developed. And so the impacts, when you look at them, are pretty known from the start, and we can predict if it's going to be a major issue acquiring that right-of-way. We do have some flexibility in this portion, I would say specifically of, you know, do we want to have a divided section? Do we want to have a five-lane section, a four-lane section, so we can kind of manipulate that to, to match the appetite for acquiring right-of-way? Yes?
Does that estimate include any signals like at McElroy and Sansom?
It does include a full signal at McElroy and Sansom.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That PCI sixty-four, that's the grade that that portion gets, which is not, I would have thought it would be much lower. So do you think in three years it could have deteriorated to a big enough extent to make a difference? Because that does not seem like it would get a sixty-four to me.
So this portion, a majority of this portion was where we, we had a small contract, one of my first contracts actually, to replace the curb and gutter, and then the county came back and did a pulverizing overlay. So that's why this portion actually has decent PCI score. The next portion, which is the pink, is the portion that we have a twelve on out of a hundred, so yeah, it's, yeah.
But do you think, I think you said that you, this was done three years ago?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you think three years' worth of the big semis going back and forth would have reduced that?
I do think it's gone down. My I do think it's gone down. My personal opinion of driving it, um, I probably drive it once a week, is that it's held up well. Um, before we replaced it, Randy had us do a geotech analysis and a pavement recommendation, um, and that, and to look at how much pavement we need to handle the trucks. So what they went back with was a much beefier section of asphalt than, um, what was, what was there before, so. I think it's held up. I mean, if I had to guess, I would think it'd be high fifties, um, somewhere around there.
I have to drive that every single day, multiple times a day, and two B is not bad.
Yeah, I think it's held up, but you think so?
No, no, it, it's not bad. One is terrible.
Yeah, and so transitioning to one, um, so this is a phase that we also don't have, we haven't started design, um, nor do we have funding for construction. And I have previously spoken in terms of this phase kind of being on the back burner because of the optimism I think we kinda all had with, um, the development. Uh, and so, I think y'all know more about that than me, honestly, but, uh, seeing that that hasn't progressed as we all were, um, planning or hoping for, I do think the urgency is top of the list for, um, how bad and completely failed this pavement is, so.
Well, that bring, raises a question though, because I think eventually, the master plan says it will go through and go to Western Center. Do we wanna spend the money on one, or do we wanna spend the money on the dotted line? I think that's what we really need to talk about, because that's where it's gonna go. The question is when, of course, a- and, and the, the cost as well, but I would be hesitant to pour a lot of money into number one today, um, cause I think we're gonna go that dotted line route. I can't say when, but soon, sooner than later. Um, I've had preliminary discussions with our, our county commissioner about that, about that property, he's interested for multiple reasons, and about that connection there, and I said, "Great, I would love to build it, you wanna help me? You have any money for that?" He did not get his check, but, but I think it's a possibility we go ask the county for some money for that in the future. I don't know how much, no idea, but I think that was something, could be potentially with a little bit of a partnership. So that's, but that's longer term. I don't know how far out that could be, but that's a possibility, so.
I will point out that you're correct, the MTP, the Master Therapower Plan, does show the realignment to, uh, Western Center. However, in the recent years, especially looking at what the, was proposed by the development, um, it wasn't that we would abandon, um, the existing alignment of McElroy. It's that it would still exist and perhaps be downsized, um, or definitely not expanded to like a four lane divided. So, we had a discussion about that today, actually, and I think, I agree with your logic completely. I think there is, uh, somewhat of a counterthought of, well, it wouldn't be a complete waste because the road would still exist in the long-term future for Phase One.
This is a much, it's like a two lane or something?
You could potentially look into that, um, I mean, right. Uh, the ultimate, especially for the realignment, um, was proposed to be a four lane divided section with sidewalks on both sides. I think what we have costed here would be to put back, um, a four lane undivided, so just four lanes, and we would only propose sidewalk on the north side. And then, we would minimize the amount of like signals, um, the only signal modification I have in here is to modify the approach at one fifty-six, to basically add a right turn lane, is what I've estimated in the cost.
So, talking about that right-hand turn lane, uh, would this update fix that massive hole that's right there, that the trucks just seem to?
Yeah, it's terrible.
Fall into every time?
Yeah, we would potentially need to acquire some right away or easement, or shift the approach, but yeah, we would.
And I would hope that if we finish the dotted line section, that, that, that purple section there that's one would eventually be like a no truck. I mean, I, I would hope, because it, that, that turn is so tight. It's difficult for trucks to do that without going into multiple lanes of traffic. It's not safe for them and it's not good for the road.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention mayor council, so, uh, segments two B and one are within the boundaries of the TIRS. So if we take these projects to voters, voters approve, we likely could, um, reduce our issuance and pay it back with TIRS money because we've been building up, I think we've got right now about five hundred thousand some dollars, and that'll continue to grow as the value in the TIRS is growing. So that was all by design, um, to include that because McElroy is, needs attention.
Yeah, I, I can see redoing one, basically the exact same it is now, just, you know, fixing it. But I absolutely will not support the city putting in that budget unless there's a huge amount of development that's going to pull in tax dollars on there. And from right now, the, the, the company that owns that, we've been in multiple talks with them. I don't see that happening anytime in the future. And unless you build something, now I can tell you the residents of Saginaw, that dotted line ain't gonna help them anymore.
Right.
The ones that live over, because I live over there.
It is more of a regional benefit, yeah.
If you fix one, we're, we're good.
Right.
But, uh, yeah, the, I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend, like I say, I'm okay with, you know, it depends on what the county's gonna have to give, but it's, it, they're gonna have to jump in significantly, because this is really, that dotted line, that's, that's, uh, it's, it's always been the c- cities thing, and it's for all, all.
The Master Therapower.
That's on them to do.
Yeah.
And they have to pay to put the infrastructure. So, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm perfectly happy we're playing the long game, because I know all the citizens that live over. They're perfectly happy with cows and horses eating grass for the next twenty years on that.
Yeah. It's a good point, and the other thing to consider is, when that develops, there will be a traffic impact. It's, it's not like it's neutral, because when the frontage, you know, and the residential component, it's, developer's costs are a portion of it.
To be different, if that dotted line really helped us, uh, fix a congested area or something, did that?
Uh, one last thing to, um, we, we had talked about approaching the commissioner requesting that, you know, there may be some discretionary funds, which, uh, part of the bond in twenty-one, we got a match. So I feel like the, the commissioner has been, uh, friendly to us. In fact, he's participating, uh, four hundred fifty thousand over to Gator North, and I think he's, he's said he's an infrastructure guy, wants to see projects. You know, we're planning for the future, so that could be a potential. There'll be some discussions here pretty soon, that, you know, hopefully, we know one where another will be able to share with, with voters.
Yeah, I can see a three-way deal between the developer of us and the commissioner of the county, absolutely.
I have a question, and not step on you at all, but how far out does that TIRS go, specifically the Falcon development? Is that included in that?
Yeah, it is.
So when that's done, there'll be additional property value from that increase?
That's right, yeah, so, it's a great point, uh, and it's a, it's a lot about significant amount of value. So fifty percent of the value within the boundary of the TIRS, and our, we have one TIRS, non-contiguous parcels, but Falcon will probably add twenty-plus million taxable value, half of which will stay in the TIRS, um, and then half goes to the city.
Gabe, Gabe, we're talking TIRS, will you just quickly give us, remind folks what the TIRS is and what it means?
Yeah, uh, there's a few things that, uh, I, I feel like in my career, I wish, uh, we could be done and move on. It started off with the bridge, when we opened the bridge, I had hoped to never hear about that again, although I still hear about it. Thought we had made changes to carports, and I thought, you know, that's behind us. Roundabouts, thank God, appears to be settled for the moment. Here's my, here's my speech on the, uh, the TIRS. It's like a savings account, it's a financing tool. So we've designated a boundary, uh, of parcels within this boundary, and other taxing en- entities participate. TIRS stands for Tax Incremental Investment Zone. So we're taking a portion of the tax dollars, and we're saying within this boundary, they have to stay there. So it's, it's a savings account that the city participates in at fifty percent, the county participates in at fifty percent, and Tarrant County College. So we're getting fifty percent of the taxable value from the county and TCC that we wouldn't get. And we're also committing fifty percent of the city's taxable value to stay, uh, within the boundaries. It's really useful to redevelop properties. Our only TIRS expenditures so far have been to remediate the, remove the asbestos at the old fire station, which is a perfect textbook use of a TIRS. You use this financing mechanism to, um, to encourage development that wouldn't happen. So when you have a blighted property that's just stuck, you use that. Uh, what helps us, and when we're creating the boundaries of the TIRS, is that we had some areas that we know, we don't know when, but we know they're gonna develop in the future, so as that value grows, we'll have more capacity to do infrastructure-related projects. Thank you, Gabe.
Uh, one final thing on this. You said, uh, putting in sidewalks on the northern side of Phase One, there would be no reason to actually do that at this point, would there? I mean, there's no sidewalk connecting Levine, uh, from Levine over to Spring Creek.
Correct, so.
So.
Yeah, so transparency, in the past, all of our CIP, um, conceptual planning level OPCCs have always just, as a default, included sidewalks on both sides of every road. Um, in the recent years, five years or so, I've looked closer every year at those estimates and thought, does this make sense? So, some of the changes I've made, you know, discussed these with Randy, they still can change, but is that I've taken the sidewalks out of industrial for the CIP planning purposes, and I've taken the southern sidewalk out of McElroy on the east side. Um, the main reason to keep it, in my opinion, is that there is the Spring Hollow, um, division, I, or I don't know the name of the actual subdivision, but.
Spring Creek.
Spring Creek. Um, and so like, in Phase Two A, we have a sidewalk on the north to make sure that they can connect across the tracks to city facilities. I would think similarly with the school, um, on the east side, the high school, that I, I do think a sidewalk on the north side may get some usage there. It may not be as highly trafficked, but.
It wouldn't get any usage because they're gonna cut up Levine to get to the high school, and so.
Right, well, that's, yeah, so I guess I was talking more to B.
McElroy to Levine, I, I can't see a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Really ever going there until there's development, and at the point that there's development, we could plan for there being expansion of sidewalk at that point.
Sure.
But I, I don't see putting it in.
Yeah.
Preemptively.
I think that's a fair point. That was our conservative, um, decision, was just to include the noise.
Okay.
The developer of the sidewalks in, it was part of the development.
Yes.
Sure.
So, didn't, I remember, but doesn't the Saginaw, Eagle Mountain Saginaw, own a piece of that land there? And there was talk at one time about building a middle school or something over there?
It's on the.
Other side, right, north end.
North end of Levine, on the west side.
So my point with the, with the TIRS and with Falcon being in there is, it's really beneficial that we help them finish that, right? As it, we get out of the way as much as possible, because, I mean, the sooner that we can start collecting and, and getting the interest on that money, I mean, it's just gonna compound, so, uh, it'll help with, if not Phase Two, be Phase One for sure.
Yeah. I think, I mean, we just touched on everything else, I will just say, the other challenge I had listed on here would be, um, the text dot coordination. So just if we do have to modify that signal to make sure it has the appropriate, um, approach and the right turn lane, there would most likely be a permit or something that needs to be acquired. So, the next step is blank intentionally, I think, you know, we've had a lot of the discussion, Gabe, that we were hoping to have today, but were you looking for any further, um, discussion or direction about moving forward?
Yeah, I mean, so, um, what we wanted to hear from you is we have some amount of money available where we can begin design on another phase, based on condition the worst phase is, um, Phase One. So if it's your desire, I think we can bring a design contract court, get that started as preparation for, you know, if we go to voters in May, we can say we've already got it on design, uh, under design, uh, because it's, it's just gonna have, have to happen anyway, we've got the money there. Yeah, that was kind of a thought, so that's what we're.
So for clarification, is the design for two A is funded?
Yes.
Okay, so we're just talking about either two B or one or both, is what we're talking about?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Just, just the, the design piece, right, at this point, yeah.
So you briefly mentioned industrial, where are we at with that? So if we're gonna go to bond in May, we need to have our ducks in a row by, was it February?
Mm-hmm, to call the election. Yeah.
I mean, if we, if we start talking about bonds, then I need a thorough, a- at least for myself to get behind, in, in, in definitely road bond, a, a thorough down understanding of exactly what roads are gonna be doing for bond, and also too, any other roads or any other thing in which we're going to incur debt. Not, not just the bond, I mean, to me, the only difference between a bond and debt is one has to go to the voters and the other don't. Every one of them end up in a, a, an increase, if you will, of, of debt, which will have a impact on the citizens. So I can't, I have to have the whole picture, I mean, you know, ev- every single thing.
So, uh, I can answer some of that kind of briefly, and then we'll circle back maybe our next meeting. The thought, based on pavement condition, is that we would bring industrial and East McElroy to voters, design and construction, total that's forty-one million, is that correct?
Industrial and East McElroy, no, it'd be less, um, with Phase One being disalignment.
Okay.
It would be thirty-five.
So. So industrial and B two, I mean, uh, two B?
No, that includes the one as well, yeah.
One, two B and industrial. So we're kinda holding off on industrial because, um, contrary to popular belief, we don't try to piss everyone off all at once, just in small doses. So industrial, the corner is under construction now by Fuel City, text dot, so, um, you know.
I did have a hidden slide here, I, I think we're working from PDFs, I don't have it, but I ha- the information for industrial is the PCI's range from thirty-five to fifty-five. Um, I think those are probably deteriorating much quicker, um, because that pavement, like, that concrete, once it goes downhill, it goes downhill quick. Um, the total cost for Phase One and Phase Two of industrial is ten million, each phase is five million.
So, I have a question, and, um, we're talking about the potential of starting design using TIRS funds, we could.
So, just to clarify, and Kim, uh, let me know, we have enough money in savings from other projects. If we, uh, catch a lucky streak and our construction bids come in favorable on this section of McElroy, that's all money to the good that we could roll into other design. We have money on hand where we could do design for Phase One of McElroy, but not Two. So we've got about eight hundred thousand, I think all total is what, five thirty and what's the other?
Right.
A billion?
When you say Phase One, are you talking about the, the, I guess you call it?
The pink, yeah.
The pink, it's that easternmost section that is, I think, literally the worst pavement in the city. It's bad.
The question that I had is, are we gonna spend that money? And then we talked about potentially doing a bond would be for design and construction.
Correct.
So.
So, so what we would do, uh, is bring an amount to voters that we're confident we can finish a project. My pre-de gripe about some cities is they, you don't wanna go back and keep asking, you just anger people. But the reality is, we don't have to issue everything. And as the TIRS builds, especially on those projects, we could pay for, uh, we could issue the bonds but pay it back with the, uh, TIRS money for the sections that are eligible, and it has no tax rate impact.
Right, but, I mean, really, there's no difference. I mean, the only difference is it might speed the timeline up a bit, is that what we're talking about here? Is, but because we'll have a design, instead of having to do, wait for the design after the bond gets voted on.
That is a factor, certainly, yeah, because.
Yeah, we've, we've got money available now that we should move, streets, they, they need attention. And, and that's just not our city, that's every city, so that's kind of a.
That's, that was my main, main question, was like, okay, if we delay, then we're just looking at the road getting way worse, is basically what we're looking at.
I think it's twofold, I think just the sense of urgency with how bad it is, and then I talked about the timeline, that's the, the proposed timeline for two A, which would be starting in twenty twenty-eight. My thought is, if everyone's kinda moving in the same direction of, let's bite off a bigger chunk of East McElroy to start all at once, get some fa- um, savings with cost of magnitude, order of magnitude, then we do need to, it would be nice to get started on Phase One sooner than later to coordinate that with text dot.
So, you. So you had said earlier on Phase Two that the design, was that the one that you said the design for 1 million was just a ballpark?
Right.
Okay, so could we get a more firm number? And if it's, that's less than the 800, spend the money on that instead of One?
I, I would be against that, because I, I want Phase One dealt with as soon as possible. It takes a four-wheel drive vehicle to barely get over it right now. We, we, we gotta, we gotta deal with that section.
Nick, I mean, how do you feel about that? Because it's, that's the one that you were saying you didn't want to spend a dime on, so.
No, I'm-
The dotted section. Okay, so you would be, you would be in favor with One? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I was driving my wife's car the other day, ran down in a hole, and a semi truck drove over top of me.
I know it's bad. And now, and now you also got people that, that kind of ride the middle to avoid the bumps, and then it's a safety hazard, so.
Right.
It's bad.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of that as long as we, it's a pared-down road, assuming we're going to have a dotted line road eventually, that's, that's the plan, so it's not a full-fledged.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Remove the sidewalks.
It's going to be the same size this now. We're not making it, we're not expanding it, it's just-
I believe it's four 12-foot lanes right now. Sometimes it feels like 11-foot lanes with those semis, so it, it, I would make it four 12-foot lanes.
Because we got to be careful about making it just taking her down to a two-lane road, because there's going to be semi trucks come down there to make a right to go to eight-twenty S.
Yeah.
And if you make it a two-lane road, you create the problem.
Agreed. And no sidewalks.
We have to wait anyway to-
No sidewalks.
Kim, Kim mentioned that, you know, once we award construction contracts for this phase right out, we may have savings too that we could roll in for further design, so. But I still think starting some design the worst first is the right call, just to get things going.
Yeah. I mean, if we've got real close to enough to do One as-is, I mean, it won't be too long before we could just go ahead and bring that to council so we could vote on it at some point in your future.
For One or for Two B?
For One.
Yeah. Well, I believe is, Gabe, where are we ending up? Is it like the next council meeting or the next few?
If y'all are ready to move, we can bring design for Phase One, a design contract, get that going, and then we'll just kind of wait the next few months, so.
Yeah, Mary, go ahead. You're good? Okay. I think you have direction.
Okay, thank you all.
Patron. All right, 3F, car, so, oh.
Can any resident speak on the-
You can, yeah.
Sorry, guys. I'm going to try to remember to breathe on this one. All right, Mr. Randy, on that water line that's there on, on Section Three of McElroy that's in front of here, the water line that's in between where the fire station is and Knowles, that is going to be kind of in place of the trees, that's an existing water line, correct? How much more lifespan does the city expect on that water line? Like, will it need to be replaced five years from now or expanded into an 18-inch or-
You know, the life expectancy of PVC pipe, I mean.
Okay.
And that's PVCs.
All right, all right. I've spoken a lot about these dang trees, but I do just want to remind you all, we're taking out a lot of landscaping. If you don't hear about it from me, you're going to hear about it from all the seniors that live across the street, they're going to want landscaping replaced. Like Mr. Gabe said, the whole reason why we're putting a median on the section is for beautification. So I really don't like being up here saying we don't need to overspend on one thing and then saying, let's go for the gold on the other thing, but it's in front of all of our city properties. Stamped concrete looks cool, but it's very flat. If you go look at the new roundabout at Knowles and WJ Boas, there's tons of truck tire marks all over the stamped concrete. I think it needs a little dimension. Fort Worth has done some rock gardens. There's one that you can see on Basswood right in front of the Santa Fe Trails, maybe add a little bit of height. Roof Snow in North Richland Hills, they did a recessed area with pavestone. I'm not even, I don't even know if we really need the median at this point. There's been so much discussion about how much to spend on the landscaping in the middle and the 10-year span of it. The section that's in between the new fire department and Knowles is, is yay wide. I went to the meeting, so I saw the zoomed-in CAD CAM images. The section that is wide, like the picture examples have shown, is from right about here in front of City Hall, in front of the garden, down to the new fire department. From the fire department to Knowles, there's not even going to be a turn on the left-hand side. I really don't know why we need a median, but if we're going to do it, I don't think we should cheap out on it. And, yeah, that's what I got on that one.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Ben.
I have one more question. I know we want to move on.
Go for it.
But Randy, would it be possible, since we're going to be tearing up the road anyway, to cap that line and put a new line under the road or near the road if we got rid of the median and bypassed those trees with the water line? So that we were replacing the water line at the same time, but not budging with the trees, just cap it and leave it?
No, we, that's, that, we've had that line put in just to make connectivity for our system. We couldn't just cap that line. It's a 12-inch, it's a big thing in our system.
Right, but we couldn't like reroute it and then just leave it?
Reroute, they're getting underneath the road or getting underneath the sap.
Right.
To replace the line for that limit would be about a million dollars for a 12-inch, yeah.
And are we doing that anyway when we do the trees or are we just tearing the trees out, leaving the line as-
So the proposed plan is to remove the trees, leave the line.
Okay.
The alternative of no raised median, where the road would be narrower and so the line would still be well away from the road would be, there would be the trees on top of the line, and so we would, we would then cap the line and move it into the road.
Right.
Yeah.
So we could do that?
We could do that as well, but it's a million dollars, and because it's PVC, we're not as worried about the actual lifespan of the line, we're worried about the trees interfering with maintenance and causing issues with the line.
Okay.
All right, so moving on, we are to 3F.
So Mayor, before we get started on 3F, can I have the floor for a second?
If you're going to talk of something, something that's on the agenda.
Not right there, 3F I'm going to talk about.
Okay, that's fine. No, I was, I was going to say, I was going to let you talk anyhow, but-
Oh, okay.
But we brought this up, and it was my idea to bring it to councils, so we have an open meeting discussion, so, but go ahead.
So Paul, Sean, and myself had been working on this ordinance, and we had come up with some recommendations, and we have submitted them to Bren, our lawyer. We have not gotten the, you know, the, the lawyer proofed back. He told me that thinks he'll have it done by end of next week. So there's really nothing for us to discuss here, because we don't have anything to present because we haven't gotten that back, so I-
You want to bump it to the next meeting?
Yes, I want to, I want to officially move this or table this until we get the ordinance complete and back from our law office.
Bren, do we need to table it officially, or since it's, we're not taking, we're, what, how should we deal with this?
It's really at council's discretion. It doesn't need a formal tabling, frankly, because this is just a discussion.
All right, and I'm happy moving it to the next meeting, that's fine. I just want to make sure we do a public discussion. I've heard a lot of offline discussions on this, and I want us to make everything transparent and in public. I don't want to violate any Open to Record Meeting Act issue, so please be careful discussing this offline, but let's get our information and come back next time to talk about it. Does that sound good?
I mean, yeah, but well, let's, as far as discussing in, in open session, there's, there's, you know, us making a changed ordinance, we can talk to any, me as a council member, any of the council members can talk to any citizen about a change, something that they want or something that's needed, things like that.
But we can't have four council members talking about it offline?
That's right.
That's my concern.
Actually, there's not been, like I said, it's been me, Sean, and, and Paul, haven't talked to any of the other council members.
And, and before we get too far, far along on that offline discussion, I want the entire council to be involved and have abided this apple.
Well, once we get something, like I said before, once we get something that is worth bringing before council, we were going to, we're following the actual process.
Okay.
Nobody, you know, we, we've been open session, right Bren? I've talked to Bren, everything we're doing is above board, we're not in a smoky barroom trying to talk about this.
Okay. All right, so let's, let's bump this, we don't have to table, let's just bump it to the next council meeting.
Could I ask just for one, one point of clarification?
Please.
Just so I know, just, just for staff's perspective, we're going to, I'll prepare the ordinance, it's not complicated. And then the ordinance, because it's a zoning ordinance amendment, in order to be enacted, it has to go through P and Z.
Right.
But we're not saying we send it to P and Z first and then council see.
No, we should get, get what you got done so that we have something to talk. We'll bring it up in open session, so then it gets presented to the whole council. Citizens thing can come in also at the same time, they get to talk about it. If there's any changes from the whole council at that time, of course, go back to you, you make those modifications, and then it will go to P and Z to be voted upon, then it'll come back to us to be voted upon.
Thank you for the clarification.
That's, that's the actual policy, that's the way it's supposed to work, right?
Correct.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, moving on, so we'll see that, see that again. So let's go to 3G, Presentation, Open Rewards, Shop Local Program. Pedro.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My presentation is not as exciting as Trent's with the pink one line. That feels like the roller coaster has six flags, so we'll just move on to, something a little bit less fun, but still very interactive, is the Shop Local Shop Saginaw portion of economic development where we want to support our local businesses. And one of those was the Open Rewards program that we discussed during the budgeting process. So it is funded, thanks to y'all, through the budget from Economic Development escrow account, and shoppers can earn 5% in our local businesses. Currently on the list of participating businesses, it's 43 businesses, 19 of those are restaurants. We just had a new ribbon cutting for one just yesterday, so if you'd like, go check them out. Other communities that are doing this is North Richland Hills, Wataga, Keller, and South Lake, so we're not just by ourselves in doing so. As you can tell, NRH and Wataga were a part of the same chamber of commerce, so this is kind of how we heard about it as well, so it's pretty well programmed. How does it work? So you have to download the app and create an account, then you visit one of the 43 participating businesses, then you shop there, and for example, I'm going to use Joe's, because I went to Joe's today. I pay, get a receipt, I take a picture with the app, it will go to the cloud, as everybody likes to say, and then I'll earn rewards. Then if I want to use those rewards, for example, I'm going to use Joe's again, and I want to use my rewards towards my purchase, I just take a picture of the receipt again and claim my rewards. And you can use rewards only in those 43 businesses that we have. Those businesses were selected because during the budgeting process, I think it was noted that we wanted to do locals, mom and pops first, so we could always expand it to all the businesses in Saginaw, which is something that we could discuss at a later time. Oh, and if you didn't like my explanation, you could have do, we have how-to videos on our website, just there slash Open Rewards, and that's actually a picture of the app itself. And we, next slide. So if we're investing money, I want to be able to bring y'all data back and to let y'all know that the money of the taxpayers that y'all are investing into this program is being used wisely. So every month, I'm going to be submitting something similar to this, showing, this is a sample one that we got from the vendor, showing how many people are using it, what businesses are being used, where locations on the city are being used. Yeah, I think I'm almost done with my presentation. Now, we're going to have room for questions, but I actually want to challenge the council on this Open Rewards program. There are seven of y'all. I want to have each one of y'all download it, and let's see, maybe in about six months, we'll see which is the council member that has the highest rewards. So we'll see that. Just a challenge so we could see which is, I don't know, we'll, we'll figure that one out, bragging rights, I'm assuming. But I just want to note that, again, the 43 businesses that are there now, we could always expand it at a later time, that's definitely a discussion, so that's, that's my presentation, short and sweet. Oh, I wouldn't note that, I haven't visited all 43 yet, but each one of the businesses is going to be having one of these little tents. I would like to note that the new Shop Local, Shop Saginaw logo is right there, you receive the one magnet in your mailbox, and just the flyer as well. So with that, I'll take any questions. If not, I'll just run to my seat.
I just wanted to say that when you released this on Facebook, it, it got a lot of positiveness, and a lot of people seemed to be very positive about it, so it's good.
Yeah, other cities that I listed here also received the same positive comments from their residents, so I was like, I wouldn't have suggested this otherwise.
I'll spring in more South Texas, well.
It sure does. That's the goal. Thank you.
I was excited yesterday at the new sushi place, they already had the tents up, they're part of the program, ready to go, so, yeah.
I'll be, I need to get that logged, we'll be there as soon as I can handle it. That's, that's good.
And I would state, the first 100 people in the city who sign up for this get rewards, $10 automatically, except for me and Benjamin, because somehow we missed that, so we'll have to talk to the vendor on that, but thank you.
All right, thanks, guy. Thank you, Pedro. All right, moving to, we're at four, Business 4A, Consideration Action Regarding Residence in 2025-19 Authorizing the Casting of the Cities' Allocated Vote for the Appointment of Territorial Appraisal District. It says me, but I'm going to throw it to Brack. Let you drive this, you, Brack has some information and some thoughts.
So, so I made the motion that we table this until this meeting, and one of the reasons I wanted to do that is I wanted to give the larger entities an opportunity to show their hand, and if there was a clear frontrunner, then we could kind of help put some support behind number two and number three, whoever we wanted out of those two to kind of bring it up. It looks like the voting is pretty, pretty even among three people, so I want to make the recommendation that we throw our support behind Eric Crowell, who was here last time and was here the previous year. He's been very forthcoming with us and trying to earn our vote, and, which is a total of six out of-
A lot.
A lot. I've forgotten how many, but it's thousands, and he's, he's wanting our support for six, and I, I think we ought to give it to him.
And he did send an email today saying, hey, I can't make it tonight, but I would appreciate your support.
Yeah.
Any thoughts, comments on that?
I really like that he spearheaded the, the finding the, the errors. You know, that and, and the open communication that he's had, I think that that's, that's even more reason for us to vote.
Yes, a couple times, yeah.
But there's, there's two positions open. There's two positions open, is that right? But are we supposed to vote for two different people, or we can put them all? We only have six votes.
Right.
And, and we can, we can allocate it, we can vote for three people, we can vote for one person, it, it doesn't matter. We just allocate the vote.
I would agree with Eric also.
I would highly recommend we put our, our, after one person, because we still have that many votes, so. I will entertain a motion then.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we cast our votes for Eric Crowell.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion passes. Good luck to Mr. Crowell. Thank you for that, doing your homework, Brack, I appreciate the info. All right, 4B, Consideration Action Regarding Award of Bid for Old Decatur North Project. Trenton.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We spoke about this earlier, we got really good bids for this. Staff and I are familiar with DDM Construction, so their low bid of $4,352,144 is what we're recommending for award.
Any questions, comments for Trenton?
Just kind of, I, I just wanted a question, and I got the answer back about the liquidated damages. There's a lot of heat because of the delays on Knowles, and we want the citizens of Saginaw to know that, you know, this goes beyond, we want to get Simone back.
So I just had one question, the, we had one alternate, and the alternates included, is that correct?
Yes, yeah. So I've been speaking in terms of including the base bid and the alternate.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, as is typical with our streets projects, there's drainage issues here. By improving the drainage, we actually are going to improve the developable space, so I think it's a, it's a good solution.
Other questions, comments, folks? Other questions, comments, folks? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion we approve item 4B for the Old Decatur North Project.
I'll second.
Make second, all right. Please cast your votes. Brack says yay. Okay. All right, motion passes. All right, let's get... let's go on that. I'm excited. It's a good project. We need to make that happen. Thank you, Trenton. All right, 4C. Consideration action regarding individual project order, Beverly Basel Quiet Zone Establishment. Trenton.
Yes, so we also spoke about this earlier. So the IPO we're bringing to you today is for $33,000, and that's to coordinate with the railroad and redesign the necessary striping and signage updates that will be required. So the OPCC for the improvements and the coordination with the railroad is an additional $130,000, but that would come later if we were to award the project and get permitted by the railroad.
Questions for Trenton? Go ahead, Mary.
Sure.
Yes, every time a quiet zone comes up, I let people know that I'm philosophically opposed to quiet zones for safety reasons. So my vote no on this will not be a reflection of chemelyhorn. It will just be that since we are... Our job is to look out for the health, safety, and welfare of our residents. That comes into play there, and that's why I'm opposed.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion on 4C.
Mayor, I make a motion. Go ahead. We approve as presented for the quiet zone.
Okay, make second, okay. All right, motion passes. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Trenton. Appreciate that. All right, we are at the end of the regular session. We do have an agenda item, so we will at 7:50. So we'll exit into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551072, deliberation regarding retail property. We will return to adjournment. delivery regarding retail property. We will turn to adjourn.